I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first order of this business is to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the right United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first order of business tonight is to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. To approve the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four regular council minute meetings. Everybody have a chance to read those corrections, any deletions. Get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, to approve the February twenty twenty-three list of claims. Any questions on any of the claims?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. To accept accounts, balances, distribution, uh, disbursement ledgers and financial statements for various funds for February twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. To accept the four thousand dollar donation from Rainier Recreation Club again.
I'll make that motion.
On second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried with a big thank you. Uh, to accept the February twenty twenty-four liquor store operating statement.
I'll make that motion. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, building update, the Rainier EAB tree project. Jen, I think that's yours, ain't it, or Cheryl?
No, it's mine. So if this is just in regards to the mass that you see currently at the Rainier Park that's been laying there for several months. Um, our contractor just sort of stopped the process and never came back, so we decided we would hire a new tree person to come and take care of all that. He came out this weekend and he got me an estimate yesterday. I gave that estimate to Cheryl. He is going.
That's not weird.
Oh, good.
He is gonna hopefully show up this weekend to get everything cleaned up. He offered to move us up the queue because there's not a lot of technical work.
Who's that again?
Um, it's Eric Drews. He's Icebox Tree Fellers. He's the one that did the big trees right here. So, but he, um, he offered to do that. He offered to hopefully come up this weekend and get it all removed and it should be gone.
Oh, good.
How about the trees that are still standing that are half cut?
Oh, he's gonna do those too.
Cut through?
Yeah. He's gonna leave one for ecological purposes and then the rest are all coming down that are near the playgrounds, so.
Great.
Okay, well, thanks for the update on that and hopefully that gets taken care of sooner than later. Um, to approve the quote for the sewer lift station control panel, they had a quote a little over ten thousand bucks for the lift station panel.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, okay, the next, uh, is to consider approving a twenty twenty-four, uh, oh-three, fourteen, uh, conditional use application for the public pier project. Uh, I suppose we should open that up to, uh, discussion. I'm sure that's what everybody's here for.
Yeah.
You want to start by what we did earlier in that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then you can follow along with it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's pretty good. Jen, you're on the steering committee and as is Todd.
So is Todd.
Yeah, as is Todd. And, uh, we did have, you had, what, several meetings and, and based on what come out of our last, uh, the conditional use permit, uh, some lot of discussion come out. So if you can bring us up to date and the audience up to date on what went on, appreciate it.
So after the zoning meeting last week, the steering meeting came together on Monday to discuss some of the concerns and we did our best to address the concerns. Um, as someone that is very hesitant on a lot of this, I felt really good walking out of that meeting for some of the things that we were able to come up with in terms of reasonable, um, fees, um, reasonable slips per overnight. Um, I don't know if anyone, we, we have this. So you can look through all the things that we kind of disseminated and discussed and, um, one of the major things that the committee decided and was involved even on was to go forward with the, um, infrastructure for the sewer, but that we would not go ahead with the actual pump out station. And that if used in the future dictated, we would pursue a program to hook that up and install that later day, which, you know, we don't know if that would happen, but it was a concession by those who wanted that versus us, you know, who maybe had concerns about having that in our bay here. So that was one of the bigger things. Um, they also, we also agreed on seven overnight slips as opposed to the rich house sixteen. And during this time, like, we tried to be very conservative, so of those seven slips, only one can be used for a houseboat and they can only stay for, I think, seventy-two hours. So, um, and then in conjunction with that, kind of fish and boats, I believe it's like a seven day minimum overnight. So if you're staying in the area and you wanna pay for this lift for a week, that's something that you're gonna be able to do, otherwise the leftover ones will be for now being used. And you also have an ADA compliant area where, you know, you can pull your pontoon up and use up your lift and.
Jen, remember we're gonna have seventy-two hours of all they can stay.
Yes.
And they need forty-eight hours to make a reservation.
Yes. And we also determined on this meeting that we want to put together, uh, peer policy groups, so a group that maybe looks at community issues and usage and dictates maybe changes to the rules either more literally or more conservative based on usage and the demand and how things go. So we determined that we'd wanna do that in the future so that we stay in line with what's going well in the community and what's not going well in the community.
Question on that, when, when they say, uh, future dock policy committee, is that after the dock is constructed?
I, I would say that that would definitely be it as soon as all the infrastructure's in place and we start letting people park there. Again, I don't know the timetable for any of this, so they might finish in late fall one year and then.
Right.
It doesn't matter. But we also have, it will be an app-based payment system, so you would use an app to reserve whatever it is that you want to utilize at that pier at least forty-eight hours in advance. And then for special events like Rainier Day, we might make some adjustments. And we also determined to treat it as, um, also a venue, so if someone wants to have a quick wedding out there during the peak season, then we can charge for that and that is also gonna be part of the foods that go back into deferred maintenance for maintenance for the dock. Um, one of the things, the grant funding for this is we, we can't treat this as a business in the sense that we can't earn money that just goes into the general fund. This is specifically for maintaining the dock and keeping it, you know, well functioning and as far as the technical side of removing the fingers and for the season changes, uh, based on some of the conversations that are more mechanically based then had with, um, Nick Hayden, our public works guy. I, to my knowledge, that conversation was that it would take him working forty-eight hours to do that twice a year and that would be something the city would make sure it would be taken care of. Um, that is, as far as I have, Todd, you can bring up, Jen, on anything you think I've missed. Um, just for transparency purposes, I also would like to bring up the fact that there was discussion early on in the meeting about the question that was asked early on in the zoning meeting regarding the proper measurement of square footage for whether this project will trigger an environmental assessment or not. And there's been infighting about that and between people who have the capacity to figure out that square footage on their own professional time and our engineers that we have that we pay, that the city pays for these projects. So, and again, I'm one person, this is my perception, anyone here can feel free to, to kick in, but I, I happen to think that that concern is valid. Um, and we, I can talk more about that, you know, later, but I also wanna make sure that other people here that are looking at what this committee accomplished, questions, concerns. Um, there are some aspects that are concerning to me about whether the council just goes ahead and gives the conditional use permit and does not honor the zoning committee, but again, I don't wanna completely take the floor up for this and, you know, I have other things to add, but if someone else would like to participate, I would give the floor.
Does everybody have one of these? I mean, everybody in the audience have one of these?
I've got to invite somebody out there.
Cause there's, uh, you know, some detail of how we came up with some rental fees and just to show you that and some stuff talked about how the electrical be working. Um, other than that, Jen, pretty much covered that.
Big odd question on the rental needs.
Say, Ken?
Still on the rental fees there for the twelve thousand two hundred fifty? That's a hundred eighty use at fifty percent, so I'm saying that there's gonna be fifty percent of usage.
Can you talk a little louder, Kevin?
That's what we're guessing. I was, this question is exactly based around.
Okay, so you're looking at that half, that was sixty-one point five. You're saying that's half already?
How did that work?
You have a plan of how that could build.
That's half, right?
Yeah, can you speak up too, so I can't hear the question? What, hey, Kevin, come on up, up front, so.
Twelve thousand two hundred fifty dollars that is on here, that's fifty percent of a hundred eighty use of the right help.
What?
If you have three numbers, yeah.
Are you questioning the math or?
Yeah, I'll flip it to people while you guys are there.
Well, there's, the one thing you'll electric though, unless someone's doing it.
Kevin, help me understand what your question is, cause I would, or you can come up after and ask, cause she wasn't being. So they just tried to be conservative on what we would generally charge for usage and that, those were the numbers, uh, that they came up with to, they're not gonna be a hundred percent accurate because these are just projections.
Correct.
Projections and the guess. And it's not gonna be zero, I can tell you that. And it's not gonna be whatever a hundred percent capacity is, so we just had to pick something that was in between the two to be reasonable. And that, you know, it's like you toss out the top and you toss out the bottom to get what your average is gonna be. And I think we won't really know what that is with the first maybe one to two to three years of.
You, you got the base information from Doherty?
Yes.
Who, uh?
Tom put a lot of work into figuring out electricity costs.
Who rents out houseboat spaces and has electricity for him, that's so, that's where a lot of the criteria came from on this particular issue anyway. You know, what, what it costs for the, uh, electricity and that.
Um, a question where the houseboats sit behind Doherty's there, how much do they pay to have their houseboats in those slips behind there?
A lot. So it's probably like four grand a year.
Yes.
Okay, so if you, yeah.
Yeah, if they rent them for the season, I heard the number, four thousand dollars.
But if they're here for seven dollars a night, eight, okay, okay. And then, um, really the difference between a cabin cruiser and a houseboat?
Yeah.
Are they just kinda saying how many people?
Well, no, it, Tom gave us a, a definition. It was basically they ability to walk from the very back of the boat through the actual living compartment and into the front deck area, which you can't do in a cabin cruiser as I understand it. I've never been on one, so I don't.
That's the definition of a houseboat.
Okay.
If you can walk from, from bow to stern through the living quarters.
And they have the same amount of people, a cabin cruiser can pretty much carry the same amount of people as a houseboat?
Potentially. I mean, I think.
So really, it doesn't ruin?
They're in, they're in different categories, but they're still limited to, I believe, the seventy-two hour stay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, and then, you know, we talked about law enforcement and part of that, if there becomes issues, that's when we change policy on the docking.
Right.
You know, if, if something's habitual, like, we don't want one person to ruin it for everybody, obviously. It's just some patterns, you know, long enough to have patterns and, you know, we don't foresee this being a problem, cause I think we have a lot of community oriented people that live here now, that if they see something, they're gonna say something, so.
And the parking, they have that lots being ongoing issue then, or?
Do you mean like cars?
Yeah, I mean, up and down here, you know, host seat or bikes and, you know, all that, so.
It's hard because, I mean, there's no plans right now to put any parking locks in because we have such little space that using it for a parking lot just seems kind of sad, so.
And have you called other people around, like on train and cab and all the other places to see what they charge for their dock space if they do that type of stuff?
So we were given, um, examples from different cities.
Okay.
Deep Haven and there was like two others. And of course, I'm not clear on how they operate. Maybe that's a city business that they didn't use grant funding for, so they can charge way more. We're, we are kind of chained to not do that, at least until something happens and say we have to pay for something that costs a lot of maintenance and maybe we have to start charging more, but then who's gonna pay that? And, you know, we, ideally, when I look at this project, it would be great if it could be used for those in the community and also for those that are visiting.
Yeah.
So that there's two that benefit, so there's like a line of like two, two who can benefit. It's not just pay or, cause gotta be careful about pay during a hundred percent just tourism, like, you know, a lot of people make sacrifices to live here and.
Yes.
So it's, but you also wanna give people access. I mean, we're dealing with issues where we're, can't get a dock built right now, we can't get Rainier Beach dock built, and I know it's a separate issue, but it's just to keep in mind that it's good that it's city.
Um, the insurance on something like that, insured and.
I don't know. That's a question, an interesting question.
Damage done with that dock? Who is going to?
Wait, before I answer. Okay, so we're, we have dealers out on that right now and we don't have an answer yet.
Okay, so when there is damage on that dock or if, you know, because they say they make them, you know, so good now, is that going to, is the price of that, that you got here who pays for that, or is it both?
Well, there are insurance, there's, there's insurance that would pay for something massive. Someone else will mention that if something doesn't work the way it's supposed to, there's issue, you go back to contractor, which I don't, I'm, I'm not familiar with that process, but that was brought up, so.
Okay, cause yeah, the ice place away from all the docks coming in, you know, I don't know why this one makes it so much special than all the other ones.
Well, I think the only thing different would be is they are, it's not, I mean, the concrete makes it different.
Okay.
So it's not like a wood dock, right, basically, yeah.
Yeah, I think the steering committee can speak for that, but the design of this was built, you know, it's a, it's an extra cost in the build, so, but it's supposed to last longer and they gave us a life expectancy of fifty plus years before any major issues and that was information from the engineer.
Right.
And again, I gotta reiterate that this was not made as, as a economic project to create money itself. It's go to generate, uh, use from the community, use from the area and businesses and basically no different than a street. We use the street to drive on, it don't necessarily have to generate money for us, but we're using it for that purpose. And what we are allowed to charge, uh, for maintenance, uh, for upkeep and, uh, obviously the more it's used, I know a comment was made pumps wear out and electricity gets used. Well, the more it's used, the more we're gonna collect, so that should be, we'll have a real good handle on how much we have to charge for something after we get used, useful. Right now, we got these numbers to go by, but if we feel falling short or if we feel they're too excessive, uh, we just put the money in a, in an account and use it for future maintenance and, and we'll have to adjust that accordingly, but that's, that's the best we can do with, now with the information we have and, you know, not even being built yet and being used, I think it's pretty accurate. A pretty good try anyway, so. With that understood, I think most of the questions, and that brings me to the point on that EAW and the, um, you know, the, a lot of the questions that were asked at the conditional use permit hearing, most of them were construction issues, operation issues and everything else, which, um, actually the steering committee or the conditional use, the zoning committee was supposed to act on the issues that didn't meet the zoning requirements. And quite frankly, they, it met all the requirements, only a couple that were in question, of course, the engineer asked them, one was an EAW and he, he cert, uh, he was more than specific that he figured it met the, and he put his name on that and along with, uh, two other biologists put their name on it that meet that criteria, so.
I would like to make a comment on that because this has consumed me, consumed me since this was, this was brought up and long before that. And I think it's realistic to say, when you look at what S D H used, um, to measure all of this, then you have to understand also that there's a Minnesota statute, and I'll just read it for you. It says, "For construction or expansion of marina or harbor that results in a twenty thousand or twenty thousand or more square foot total or twenty thousand or more square foot increase of water surface area used temporarily or permanently for docks, docking or maneuvering of water craft, the local government is the R G U." So this is saying that you have to use the maneuvering portion and count that as part of the project. What I see is what S D H did is they used the areas where the boats will be parked. They did not use the, they did not count the area where the boats would be maneuvered. And we're gonna have people parking boats that may be really great, great at it and other people like me that are swimming all over the place. So, uh, that is probably one of the key issues for that. And I think that as the permitting process proceeds, that may reveal itself. I know Jason has said that it's not gonna be an issue and that there is no guiding factor to determine what is maneuvering and what is not. However, I think that based on our community plan here, one of the core values is to advocate and be proactive with water protection of Rainy Lake. And I think that it would be really poor of us to not be realistic with this project and not do what we need to do, whether it costs us more money or takes more time. I, I just think it's, we should be so thoughtful, we have something so great here, why wouldn't we be careful with it? I mean, I've lived other places, I've lived in the Twin Cities, there's nothing like this and I love it and everyone else out here I'm sure loves it for different reasons, but, you know, one of the, one of the first things this community plan says is change is inevitable, but how we change is up to us and we can choose that. And, you know, I think what needs to be done personally as just a single member of this council is we have a sixty day window to either approve or deny this conditional use permit. I think that we should table this. I think we should have an open meeting and we should present all of this information that the, the committee has been able to come up with when it comes to fees and pictures and what, see what people can see, like we did last year or the year before, I can't remember when we had public meeting, but we only had one public meeting. And then, and then we have S D H, the city, reapply for that conditional use permit and make some changes to the application because we have some constructive changes that need to be made to that application. And then we go forward and that would be what I would suggest. I think that that denial, while some might see it as not being consistent with what the zoning committee is supposed to be there for. It was, it was a public, to me, I saw it as a public mandate, based off how this project has gone from the beginning. We have a chance now to do the right thing and still get what we want. And again, I'm only one person, but that would be my suggestion. We're here to schedule a public meeting. Dennis, you mentioned that we would pick a date to do that. I would be happy to participate in that and, and discuss and field questions and have Jason or Jeremy come back. Um, but I just think that there's no reason to do this right now when we have a sixty day window. I think that started February twenty-third, so we have a couple of weeks to get that open meeting scheduled. They reapply and we can, we can put it on the fast track if we need to, but I think that's the right thing to do. And, you know, pending more conversation, I would, I would probably make a motion that would definitely say that unless someone has something else or disagreements and.
Well, I'd like to make a couple of comments on that. Jen, this is the same argument I heard in February, in November sixteenth, two years ago, when we were talking about the EAW and we instructed our engineer, whatever you do, make sure you keep it under twenty thousand feet so that we do not have to apply for an EAW at a cost of six months and fifty thousand dollars. And we voted four to one on that, so I'm not gonna open that up again, but I am gonna suggest that we do have a meeting to discuss some of these other issues that were brought up, but as far as EAW, that's off the table, it's already been voted on.
Yeah.
That's the way it's gonna stay.
You can still do the petition and force it.
There's no yeah about it, Jen, I'm not opening it up again. And we've already taken a vote on it and that was the vote, four to one, and that's the way it stands. And it was the same argument you had right now, Jen, I understand your, your concerns and everything, but we went over them and we instructed them. We got two major biologists and a certified engineer, a P, a P E that says this is not required, so why do we wanna waste six months at fifty thousand dollars?
Why do you see it's a waste?
Because he says we don't need it, that's why, and I'm trusting him. I'm not trusting you on this one.
In this bay?
Period.
It's not gonna be cloudy, we're not gonna have sediment filled up, we're gonna have not a lot of more weed growth, all of that stuff matters to the people who live here.
You know, apparently it's not necessary according to the state of Minnesota, the D N R and the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, those people spend a lot of time and a lot of money and they're paid a lot of things to do this stuff. That's what we discussed, that's what we decided on, and to me, that's the way it's gonna stand.
How about for the citizens though? Like, don't we have a right to say? We said from the very beginning.
You certainly have the right to say, you certainly have the right to say, but we already discussed this one issue. There's gonna be, as you can see, just a, there, there's already, you know, fifteen talking points that come up at that other meeting that are gonna be discussed at another meeting that we're gonna set, we're gonna try to set that for early April.
I would say the second week in April.
Yes, early April, but there's certain things, we're not gonna go keep rehashing everything and putting delays on the, these are nothing but delays that are causing everything.
It's a flexible process.
Excuse me, excuse me, let's keep something in order. We would like to set a meeting so we can listen to concerns and that about construction items. We're not gonna be talking about the EAW because that's already been gone and taken care of beyond us now. And I think they answered a lot of these questions, you yourself answered a lot of them at that meeting where you already had a lot of talking points. Now, if we have more talking points coming up, and that's what, I'd like to listen to what some, some of the concerns are and that, and that's what we're gonna be listening to, uh, April, whatever.
Let's do it the first week in April. Cause if you do it before our regular meeting.
Excuse me, first week in when?
I'd say we do it the first week of April before our regular meeting or before, maybe of the whole meeting. That would be April first through the fifth, cause that's two weeks out. So if you five through this.
Just a minute, let's, we're trying to set this.
I don't have a calendar. You guys do.
How about Tuesday, April second?
Tuesday, April second, six o'clock, is that six thirty, same as the?
Well, we can go six o'clock.
Six o'clock Tuesday, that's, that is gonna be the next open meeting to discuss issues on this. Now, we've already done some of these talking points, but we can rehash some of these again, uh, you know, so if they don't understand or anything else, but that's, we're setting that meeting. Uh, at this point, I'd like to recognize some more people in the audience, she had her hand up first. Go ahead.
I'm Terry Lynn Myers, you probably know.
Yep.
And we have our house on Sand Bay and we've had it for forty years. And I think you can, free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I have yet to see any kind of impact statement at all for, for Rainier Beach, for, Rainier Beach is a big deal here in this town and it makes me very nervous when we do not know the impact on Sand Bay in particular, which also includes Rainy Lake. So while fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, there's a lot of property around there that will be affected, including our public beach. This is why I found it very unfortunate, I know this weren't speeding, to forget environmental study. I think it was not a wise move, uh, we've already had this how many years, with six, six months we could fit in there really easy, so I, I'm just very disappointed that those of us who actually own property and live there and all of us who have a stake in Rainier Beach didn't have, don't have any official or any kind of, I don't, uh, what do you wanna say, just assessment of how it's going to impact Sand Bay. I, I think that's a huge question and I, I'm just very shocked that it kinda just got written off that you'll be fine. I have not seen anything specific. specific.
The reason you have not seen anything specific is because the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers do not figure it's necessary along with our biologists and our engineers it's necessary. So, what I'm arguing with you or arguing with them, I'm going to stand, since we already had a vote on this and we listened to these same arguments from the same people two years ago, I am tired of re-chewing the same food.
When you were saying this, when you were telling us on that day...
I understand that there's, fear of the unknown is one of the worst things. And I understand your concerns, but that's the way I see it.
I haven't spoken about this issue before. I have spoken about the houseport issue, which I appreciate we're dealing with. And that's a good, that's a good thing. But personally, I, again, I'm just, you can say there's nothing we can do about it. I don't know that I agree with that. That's just an arbitrary, you know, just a decision that's being made. But I'm personally very disappointed because no one came to us and asked us what we thought or how we felt we would be impacted. And nobody has said we won't be impacted in some way. I understand talks with biologists. I didn't get to talk to any of those people. So, it's, yes, it is very hard as a homeowner and property owner of 40 years there, it is very hard to not see that dealt with. That's all, that's the only point I wanted to bring up.
You know, I want to make one point. You keep pointing out how you may be impacted. This was certainly discussed. That's why we decided to dock. The dock, we believe, is going to be a very positive impact on this community. That was why we considered it to start with. And then we looked at all the other criteria that went with it as anything else. And that's why the decision to move forward step by step by step. And we've been doing this with professionalism and meetings. And we're going to have more meetings. And Mike, you had your hand up.
Yeah. So, I think through this whole process, we still have a long ways to go as far as the permitting process with the Army Corps, with the DNR, with the area hydrologists and all that. And I believe if they, if they think that there's more study needs to be done, I'm sure they're going to say, we think that maybe we need to do this study. But as of now, it's not mandated. Doesn't make sense to spend the money on it. But if you look at what their studies all encompass from the DNR to the Army Corps, even into this study, it's pretty much, you know, a lot of similarities in all. So, I think overall it's going to cover most of the stuff that's going to be on that. But like I said, if they, if they deem that there has to be more stuff, that'll be part of the permitting process. I mean, that's, that's why we have to look through the permitting process. That's why we need to move this along tonight to get on with the permitting process.
I think the audience might not have been aware of that. But this, this project from the day it started to the day it's finished is going to be monitored by the U.S. Corps of Engineers and by the DNR. So, if something gets out of line or something that appears, they do step in. They don't, you know, if the silt fence ain't up or something like that, they do step in. So, it ain't like you got a blank check and I'll do whatever you want here. It's, there's still the rules of the DNR and the Corps imply on you. So, we expect them to, we want, we want the right dock too. So, I just, it just blows me away if we just keep stalling when some of these obvious things such as the conditional use permit. There's many more things we have to step in. And there are deadlines on this. We have to get this approved by certain times for construction. And if it comes in over budget, we need time to adjust the, you know, the width, the height, the color, these things. And then we have to re-submit another set of plans for bids and that. And that all takes time. They just don't say, okay, we're going to make it 20 feet narrower. Give me a new price. There's new designs and everything else. So, budget is going to control a lot of what we can do and can't do. And we need the time to do that because we're under a deadline. Is it correctly June 30th or is...
For the landslide construction, if the legislature doesn't grant an extension?
Yeah. Then we have to jump through. And all this, you know, if we have to even grant the extension, even if we get it, they don't do that for nothing. That costs money. That all comes out of the grants.
And if that's the case, why can't we make it smaller? How come it has to be so large? Why couldn't we have just a pier like we wanted instead of this rock?
Who wanted it? Who wanted it? The steering committee come back to us as the council. This is what we want. This is what we might be able to afford. And they checked. And they checked.
Why people want, a community wanted a basic pier out there that we could all enjoy. People could come in, have fun for a day, get their boats, go in their cabins, do whatever they wanted. That's what the community wanted. We had five people that wanted to put 20 coastboats down there or whatever. You know, we don't feel that's not right for our community.
How about the steering committee? When you, when you talk to the people, what was the consensus? Were they senior design? Are they for it or against it? What is the consensus on this? Just let them talk.
Personally, everybody, I talked to a lot of the people in the community, not just the ones that live along the waterfront there. And everybody thought it was a good project. When you explained to them why we decided to build it the way we were going to build it, it was, they were receptive to it because they explained that it's going to be strong enough for the sand ice movement. And you also have to remember that there is a bottom lake there that had some issues that kind of dictated some of the way this ended up.
So, and the majority were in favor of the design and that. You told them. Mike?
If the council approves this CUP, does it prevent you from going forward with the EAW if it comes back at any point?
What was the question, Mike? I didn't quite get it.
If you approve the CUP today, which I think this is above, can the council still conduct a more thorough environmental assessment after the fact?
I would guess we could.
Okay.
It could.
Because all this is, is just to say we're going to change the ordinance over there. We're going to change the zoning. It's not that the zoning doesn't mean we're going to build what we're going to build. That still can be changed one way or the other.
You know, that's, that's a good point, Mike. If, if you bring that up, the conditional use permit being approved, that's one thing. If, if there's enough evidence that they can tell my engineer, and when I say my, the council's engineer that we hired for this project and the biologist that it is necessary to have one, you know, then the recommendation from the engineer would come back to us saying such. And I don't think we could have one at that time if we can afford it or pay for it and that. I'm sure he'll come with a price and a timeframe and all the other things if that's necessary. But right now, like I said, we've already voted on it. It don't mean we probably can't change that, but I would have to see more evidence than some people that are just obviously against it.
I don't think anybody in here is an expert on EAWs. I certainly am not. But I would ask that the council and your next meeting, get a couple of hydrologists from DNR, quite possibly an Army Corps of Engineers, to speak to the public about their concerns. That would, I think that would, that would help. Let me put it that way. They're the experts.
Great suggestion.
Unless you are. Or you.
Nobody is here.
Well, I would like to see if we can arrange for a couple of whatever, whoever biologists or whoever deems necessary because we are going to appoint a meeting at...
April 2nd.
April 2nd. And if we can find somebody to do attend it, I will, I will get them.
I think that if we find out that someone can, can't, the ones that could attend needed to be on a different day, that maybe we talk about that, maybe adjust the meeting date based on the availability of having one or two people come to this meeting.
What about referendum?
I don't think that's necessary. Referendum is usually when you want to charge people for what it's going to cost. And, you know, like a school district will have a referendum to pay for a school. This one is, this one is being, this one is being funded by the federal government. So, I don't think a referendum is needed.
Let's set that meeting for April 2nd then.
Yeah. I think we did, didn't we?
Yep.
But that's the reason for referendum, Kevin, is usually the funding issue. This one's being paid for.
And we can have this hatched this out again on April 2nd?
How many lots have been looked at or set laid on here?
Just yours, next to your house, Kevin.
That is the lowest range point in the neighborhood. Back in the minutes, I don't even know how many years ago, when the land was being built, there was a proposed part of a lot of them on there that we had some issues with. And I wrote some paperwork in showing the Civil Law Act that you can't do that. It's natural water. After the flood, during the flood, I had 14 to 20 fishers in my basin. Of fishers, I draw pressure from water pushing against the concrete block and pushes against my house. So, I'd like to note in the minutes that if that lot is used and built in and if my house is wrecked with water damage issue, that there will be legal consequences from us back at said engineers, contractors in the city of in there. And add to another perfectly laid on here, that they should be used or starting to use once. There's a public DNR parking lot that is packed hard. No issues with you related on there once before. It's closer to this pier than anybody else.
There's, there's a lot of options for lay down yards, Kevin. As a contractor, I can tell you there's a lot of options for lay down yards. And I know the volatility of that lot. It is a soft lot because it's filled with wood chips, just like your lot where you were built is filled with wood chips all underneath. And that's what's really, it was a swamp that was filled with wood chips and that sort of thing. But as a contractor, bringing in these heavy, you know, panels that would be set on the, on the bridge, I can tell you how those are done. They're scheduled to be brought in. The truck will come in, they offload it from the truck and they put them right on the pier after the, after the piling is set. The pilings, if I was a contractor, Kevin, I was just explaining some of this stuff to you if you listen. Right down the road from you is the Rickig Tackle. That's a real good lot. If I was a contractor, I seriously consider putting maybe the piling there. Also, I would contract the city. The contractors will come and look where they need to put something. Actually, a great spot if they could deal with a CN would be right out here on this blacktop, but, or back in our city storage yard. So, the contractor will take care of that. We just made that available because it's city-owned property. And if they choose to use it, they'll have to restore it to as good or better conditions. That's a standard procedure in any contract. If you destroy something, you have to put it back to what it was. So, your concerns, you know, are valid, but don't worry about them because I don't think they'd be using that. And if they did, they'd have to put it back to as good or better condition.
So, if I take photos of all this now and they come fill it in and they clean it on here, all that building we pulled back, no...
Actually, Kevin, that's our, give the ordinance. If you read the ordinance, it says if you use a low spot, they use fill. They have to bring it back to natural state grid. That's, that's in our zoning ordinance.
As I say, I think we're talking about a concern that's not going to happen. But anyway, it is a concern. That's, that's the things that we want to talk about at this next meeting. And well, well listed and we'll pass them concerns on to contractors and whoever else is interested in this project. Any other questions?
I just want to clarify, you know, Tammy, you brought up the size. I didn't really fit in with the small town character that, you know, you've heard some people give you feedback on. That, as I understand it, because I was not on the steering committee until 2020 when I got elected. But what I read back on was that they had to make it that big based on their application for trying to get a federal grant. They call it like the big grant or something. So, they had certain circumstances and stipulations that they had to meet in order to even apply for that to be considered a good project for that. But when they didn't get it, they never went back and adjusted the project to my knowledge. So, it just stayed the way that it was.
So, if it goes over price, then who's going to be responsible for that?
For what?
If it goes over price?
They have, well, again, like, I'm sort of ignorant on the bidding process, but again, like, we know what we have to spend. And if a contractor comes back and says, I can do it for this, we're going to know whether we can afford to do that. And then I have no idea how construction cost change works if something changes down the line. Dennis would probably be better to explain that than me.
That was one of the concerns I think Mr. Helwijk brought up. Can we afford this? Well, obviously, we have about a $5.3 million budget, including engineering and everything else. Once we get a design project that we can put out on bids, and that's why we're trying to get these questions answered, so we can put out on bids, get the permits in order, get these up. And then we can design, we may have to change to design to the budget because everybody's worried about taxes going up and paying for this thing. We have control of the pencil here. So, then we may have to make some alterations. But again, that just takes time. That's what I was trying to explain. If we have a May bid letting, by June, we could have another one that's necessary and by, and get the contracts executed and things like that. But there are questions that have to be resolved and that's what we're trying to do. And that's the purpose of these meetings. I can tell you, the biggest cost going forward on these things, whether affordability, usually the CapEx, the investment in it and the interest paid on that. Well, this is funded, fully funded with a grant. And so, if we stay within a grant budget, then the concerns that Lad brought up about what's the cost to run and all these things, those will be taken care of by user fees or docking fees or electricity fees, things like that. And they'll be minimal because of the design of the project itself. We're paying extra to have concrete and steel. So, we've had all these considerations. That's what I think. I don't want to keep going over and over again. I don't mind explaining them again, but to stop everything for another two weeks or another six weeks or another six months for another vote, that just does run up costs. Like I said, there's a $50,000 proposal, not proposal, but estimate from an engineer that it might cost to do an EAW.
The updated cost is $40,000.
$40,000, okay. But, and that's just one. There's other things that will arise that we have to act on. So, that, and the sooner you go, but we want to go in the right direction with the right size and everything else. And a lot of that stuff is controlled by after its bid. After its bid don't mean that's exactly what we're going to construct because that'll be determined by the checkbook and still meetings.
Actually, the CUP is just a formality to keep the project going. If you don't approve the cup, the project is going to stop because they have to have that to keep going. Once we approve the cup, then we go on from there. We have our next meeting. There is when we start doing the business of deciding what we're going to have, what we're going to cut. That's when that takes place. But the cup is just a formality for the government to give them approval. Yep. The Army Corps of Engineers, the DNR said, yep, go ahead, but you got to have this because they have things like a cup like we have to fill up in order to do it.
Okay, that's, sorry. With the grant, so, don't you have to stay with that? You can't change it once you've got it?
We do a change order. It's just a change order.
We had the congressman sit here and told us that.
Yeah. It's a change order. If it comes, this bid, this thing started four or five years ago and we figured the money that we got was going to be enough four or five years ago. Well, that $5.3 million today is not worth $5.3 million. So, when it comes in the bid, the mayor says, when the bid comes out and it's $6.3 million, well, we don't have the money for $6.3. So, what do we do? There's when we make our changes. We do a change. You make the dock shorter. You do less slips. That's the way the process works in the company. You don't do it all the way down the way.
And that's all, we did ask that question because when LCMR gives you the money for a project, they're giving you money for a project. All they've seen is conceptual drawings of a pier that goes, go out there. They've never seen the lights. They've never seen the sewer. They've never seen, you know, whatever's on it or the road going to it and everything else. But that money is to construct basically a pier. Should the pier end up 300 feet or 200 feet, whatever's in that budget, they can spend that much for that pier. Don't necessarily mean it has to be 300. And so, the engineer designed it for that criteria based. And that's what the steering committee went out with and, you know, looked at. And we made sure that it stayed under 20,000 feet and all this criteria. That's what I'm saying. This stuff has all been hashed over. And Wilber is exactly right. I was a little disappointed, I tell you, in the, in the, in the meeting because they did not address the conditional use permit. They, they addressed the issues we're talking about, the sewer, the, you know, other things that do not concern the conditional use permit. That's just one of the formalities in the steps that it takes. And it just delays us and everything else. So, we, you know, and I know we've all promised open meetings and other meetings. Now, you heard us just schedule one. And it was kind of a slap in the face that you didn't think we were going to have another meeting to discuss some of these construction issues that were being talked about at the conditional use permit meeting, that should be talked about at an open meeting in a draft center.
That should have happened before the conditional use...
Well, a lot of more, that's what the steering committee was appointed for, and, and, and if you look at all the things that over the years, uh, that, you know, I got a list of all the things, what they did. They had, they had meeting after meeting and discussion after discussion. But obviously, Jen, some of these things, these points weren't talked about, or they were talked about and, uh, they didn't arrive at a consensus. So now, as we go forward, there's going to be more points, different points that'll be coming up in this whole process. I think we radiated that all along, that to the day we pull, pound the last nail in this thing or something, uh, there'll probably be some kind of discussion on what we should name it or, or whatever else. So it's an ongoing process, and that's why I hate to see it delayed. I want to make sure we have the meetings, so we get the input, so we adjust it, and then, yeah. So with that said, I'd like to see, uh, get a recommendation for a CPU or, uh, for a conditional use permit?
A motion, I mean, to what?
A motion.
A motion, I'll make the motion.
For what?
That we go ahead and approve the cup.
Conditional use permit.
A conditional use permit.
I think we should have the open meeting first. I just think that if, if we do it that way, then the transparency is going to disappear again. The steering committee made a lot of nice adjustments and recommendations, and I think April 2nd, and then the following meeting in April, we vote on that.
Fair enough, if that's the consensus, then we have the meeting set at April 2nd.
At 6 o'clock?
At 6 o'clock, and, and a vote to follow afterward, depending on what arrives at that meeting, but, uh, okay. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, go ahead.
Uh, I'm not from here, I'm here in St. Louis.
Can you stand up, please, so we can see you and hear you a little bit?
I see, I, I have a vision in Minnesota, and I have an interest, not a financial interest, but an interest in having a financial interest in this town. And I'm kind of confused about the annual maintenance.
The, the what?
Because I hear that you were going to, all the maintenance was going to just need for user fees?
Yes.
That is correct, user fees.
Okay, I, I could relate if anyone wants to talk to me, the story about the sand, or saying that they were going to want some user fees, and the city of Minn pays out now almost $2,000 a day to keep the damn thing running, because they thought that it was going to last forever and never needed to be fixed, and something like this dock is good for 50 years apparently. I guess that's just something that I would be thinking about. If I were to build somewhere, and expecting that financial, uh, user fees around a couple of times.
It's like with the Woods Brewing Company, they're making their own docks in Baghdad, two, three, 15 docks.
They're selling liquor.
And they're selling liquor.
They're selling a lot.
It's a little easier to make money selling liquor than selling both of those.
Obviously, you don't own a distillery. Mike?
I do have your second, so I just need to, uh?
We, motion failed for lack of a second.
Okay.
And so Tuesday, Tuesday, April 2nd, we're going to have another meeting, open meeting. So if anybody has any questions, such as Mr. Boyham had on the laydown area or anything else pertaining to the construction of the dock, bring it to the meeting. We'll try to answer them or repeat what we said. Yeah, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Is the council going to send the CUP back to the zoning committee? But the minutes and the recommendations should be steering committee, so if they can have those and look at it again?
That's what I had suggested, but it sounds like they want, Todd, I mean, am I hearing you right that you want the council to still grant the cup? And that not go back to zoning?
Yeah, there's no point going back to the zoning meeting till after the, after the meeting, is what you're saying. And we'll, we'll see what comes out of the meeting on April 2nd, and we'll take action on that or send it back if we have to.
I don't know if the zoning committee, yeah, the zoning committee got a copy of the documentation that was provided by the steering committee, forgive me if I get the committee's stuff.
Yes, we did.
But that would be a good thing.
Well, like I said, April 2nd, another public hearing or meeting, and so if you've got any questions on constructions, colors, widths, lengths, bring them with your concerns. We'll hash it over one more time, and, and, and there may be other meetings we need after this because things will change if we're under budget or over budget, and we have to then look at our meeting and say, well, it looks like we have to make it shorter or longer, or get rid of the sewer system or get rid of electrical system, those are decisions we'll, we'll have to look at. And so this is far from being the last decision we would be making on this dock. With that, anywhere?
We have one more thing, you want me?
Yep. Yeah, the support of the hockey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The letter for support of the hockey in Minnesota.
Yes, uh, to approve the letters, to support Hockey Day in Minnesota 2028, uh, we were approached by the, as you know, we were approached by, um, the City of International Falls, a committee member to help support that, and we gave him a letter of support.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
And I got one thing for open forum.
I can't, I can't hear you.
We got, we got one thing I got.
People talking in the audience, I need to hear them too.
I've got something on the, remember we were going to get some speed control?
Yes.
Flashing things we need to order, the spring is coming, if not here already.
Okay.
We kind of forgot about all that.
I've got a folder ready to, and.
Monitoring.
You've got, you found some or?
Monitoring signs.
Okay, that's great, that's all I got.
Anything else? Motion due here?
Motion due here, I like it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.